Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special call city council meeting on this Wednesday, October the 14th, 2020, at approximately 7:00, or I'm sorry, 6:07 PM. Mr. Terry, would you call the real please?
Yes, uh, Tim Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Here.
Ron Powell?
Here.
Lance Terry?
Here.
Ralph Baker?
Here.
AC Brown?
Here.
Justice Paul Corum?
Thank you. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. We have just two items on the agenda. Uh, one of two that is very, very, very important. The other one's, I mean, the first, the first one is definitely major. We appreciate everybody coming. And I will quickly introduce our visitor this evening. Not so much visitor anymore, where they've got bring with masks, so, uh, as to wear to Alma, if they go for anything, so. Uh, tonight we have Mr. Ryan Bowman, Sheriff Sloman, Daniel Allen, with us to visit our traffic relief pond. And I will turn this over to Mr. Tom Marsh.
Why?
Because you're it.
That's not me. I'm gonna turn it over to-
There you go.
Daniel.
All right, I'll do so. I'm sorry, we'll get the mic over here.
So today, we, um, I know we've talked about this often for what, almost a year now. Um, the, after the vote was passed by the voters, um, market was a little messy earlier in the year with all the COVID stuff. Um, we were able to get in the market this morning. Um, we were able to sell $7.18 million worth of sales tax backbone. That's gonna pay off the, the police debt and five million, fund five million of the projects for R-DOT. When we had last talked, the expectation was that the city was gonna have to finance a portion of the five million from franchise fees or amendment 78 debt. Given the market conditions, and we changed the structure up a little bit, added insurance, we're able to get the full five million. So, a month from now, uh, you can make payment of the money that will be available for R-DOT to, for your full match, no other than the funds being required for that agreement. So $750,000 not gonna be needed. Uh, the debt's expected to pay off, um, without any growth in 2048. Uh, but I do know your sales taxes are growing, so it's gonna pay off much quicker than that. All-in cost was, uh, or true interest cost was about, was three twelve. Uh, I think that's a very fair rate, even when comps were in the market. Um, we had about a million dollars in true retail, so total issue size was 7.18. Uh, about a million of that was true mom and pop retail, uh, most of which were gone as out of Arkansas, so Arkansas residents participated. And then we had, um, Union Bank and Trust, Citizens Van Buren, uh, Farmers and Merchants, Signature, uh, Farmers Bank and Trust, First Arkansas Bank and Trust, and then a handful of money managers participated. So we had, we had a good participation from, from various banks throughout the state who was trying to qualify, and then a handful of money managers. Whole deal was sold with the exception of two matures, um, about $130,000 worth. Uh, we committed to underwrite that, so we'll take those with no changes. Uh, so, we have documents here, uh, there's ordinance, um, and the bond purchase agreement, so assuming that the, this is acceptable to the council, uh, we, we're going to make a formal offer for instead of $18 million, um, and deal will be done.
Questions, concerns, thoughts? Tom, do you have any questions?
Oh, no. We've been on the phone all- One thing to let you know is that when we did a couple, the public meetings, and we were telling them about the early payoff, one of the things we did tell them, and we were not in a forty-year period, we were in a thirty-five-year period at that point, is that we said that with no growth, it would pay off in, uh, 2048. I mean, it's exact same payoff with no growth as it is with this, um, bond. So, that part's consistent. Um, there, it, it is costing a little bit more. I mean, we do have, if it played out the whole way for sixty, you know, sixty, uh, 2060, you're looking at about a million dollars more than what we anticipated it could be if that were to all flow out. But it's, it, right now, it's costing more.
And Tom, don't forget, that was ignoring the $750,000. We had to pay for that several, right? Or was that back in then?
That was ignoring the three-quarters of a million dollar debt.
So the big difference between the, the million plus, uh, $750,000 of that is related to this proportion that you're gonna want and have to borrow, uh, because we're only including this, this grant actually. We were only gonna get four, up or three, four quarters yet.
So you're just, y'all are getting the council's blessings and I have to go ahead and go through with the financial side of this, that's basically?
Yes, so we've sold the bonds.
Right.
Uh, we have investors that are, all we need, we need your approval, we need the, the council to pass the ordinance, uh, it needs to be published, et cetera, and then we'll close many of that.
We need two votes, one for the ordinance and one for the bond purchase agreement, or the ordinance handles the bond purchase?
Yeah, the ordinance, the ordinance handles the bond purchase agreement, so.
Okay.
Just the ordinance is the only action.
So, so then this will just get us to where the states is, are y'all ready to commit? That basically what's-
As far as the highway department goes?
Yes.
Yes, they, they are aware of where we are in the process of all this, they, the highway department, of course, so they are, uh, banking, if you will, on the fact that this is gonna happen. I mean, they, they aware, obviously aware of the tax passing, so, answer your question, yes, it's just-
I guess my biggest drawback I have is, I still haven't personally, maybe I just slept for something, seen any sort of preliminary engineering on how this thing's gonna look once dirt starts to get moved. So, well, they finally come up with a plan, and involves another stoplight out there, one out there, how quick will we say, all right, we're not doing that?
The highway department assures me from the beginning that, and, and I don't have that either, they have not done that. What, what you've seen and what we've all witnessed as far as the surveyors here, the crew, those crews, which was kind of quick for me, I thought I was excited about that, so they've done that, they're very preliminary on that. As far as what you're talking about, there will be public meetings, there will be, there will be meetings with council, and certain public input on the final design. I mean, we, we presented to them, I presented to them, however many years ago now, here's the direction, here's what we want, here's what Dr. Burgess agrees with, as far as his property goes, and so they, you know, the map that I have is the one that you know of, but as far as making a ninety-degree turn here or something like that, they've not even started that. So, and they won't, and they're, they won't for a little while, I'm sure. So, but, to answer your question, as far as this goes, I mean, I understand if that's your question as the bond goes, if we, if we decided not to go forward with that, for whatever reason, I'm not sure how to, how to back out of this.
How to back out of the bond?
You're right.
Um, from a practical matter, the, R-DOT's already started spending on it.
Right.
So, let's say we get a year down the road, you're not gonna get the full amount back. Uh, whatever's unspent would go to pay off the bond, uh, I would say that's a worst-case scenario. Um, what, from a practical matter, if everything blow up, you would have, still have some costs that'd be out of pocket for the mismatch, for the interest between now and then, uh, and for whatever money was spent. From a, from a practical standpoint, R-DOT doesn't do, start their full engineering, all that work, until pretty much we've got the funds, uh, because there are, we allocate dollars to projects or higher priority where people actually show up. So, the fact that money, and you can notify them tomorrow morning, that we have a closing date scheduled, uh, and funds will be in the bank in November. Uh, I've never had a closing not happen, but-
And we're required to spend this money for R-DOT?
I was gonna make him address that.
Yeah, so there's a timeline on spending this money. But, so to answer, I'm sorry, just real quick, you'd like Mr. Terry? There, there's a, there's a pretty good process to go through yet before we start seeing specifics, and, and again, there'll be public meetings, input meetings for, highway department's gonna be here Thursday night, you guys can come in and say, if you don't like it, you wanna cross Dr. Burgess's land, somebody else or whatever, then, that's, that's, we will go through that problem.
Well, the route's a lot of problem, and I, and the necessity, the need for a second artery to get to the east side of town is definitely needed, just for emergency purposes, but I just, if it's just a matter of putting two stoplights at the end of the little area, you're not gonna change any traffic. Just when people stacked up, it isn't.
We, we don't even know, I mean, I asked the question early on, very early on, about a lot, where a lot will be, and they say, we can't, I don't, we don't drive until these engineers get together, whether it's wanted, as you said, to keep class one on Bedrum Street, you know, I don't know if it's, it's up to engineers to, to get the best idea.
In my experience, it's also, there's certain things, they may, they may take comments, but there are certain things that they're not gonna deal on for safety reasons, et cetera, so, uh, but that's, they committed that because of tax purposes, we need them to spend really your money first, uh, which is part of the agreement with them, that we, we're capped at five million. Even if the project comes in at a hundred million, they've come, they've committed that your grievance portion is only five million, and that they would spend, uh, they expect to spend the full five million first through the years, and a portion of it within a hundred and twenty days.
Did the landowner involve in this money?
Uh, yes, we figured, yes.
Right, that's been a while.
Which that deal is not closed.
Right.
He, as Dr. Burgess says, you know, it's like, he would not receive money until he knew this was gonna happen, so. And, and I'll give you an example, and I've, and I've not been hiding it from anybody, but I've been certainly kind of holding it until appropriate time, I think, to give you an example as how things will go, or hopefully they'll go, is we, we received a, a map not too long ago of, of this same project, and it had a little variation, and I won't go into detail, but it was not a good variation. And Tom actually wanted to found it, and pointed it out, and I called, and I said, what, what is this? And, and they were like, we're not sure. Obviously, it was a brand new or a young engineer that went, has never been agreed with Arkansas, and drew something just because it seems to work on paper. And I was quite, uh, encouraged by Ms. Tudor, that's okay, so I got another one in about two weeks, and it's gone. So, there will be times that we'll go, whoa, what in the world? So it's all up to those engineers and us to be satisfied.
He's made friends with the most powerful-
His mind was, his mind was concerned was because of the sales tax and COVID, and it's gonna affect the timeline as far as them having their funds to do what we need to do, and, and, I mean, we gotta run, we're, we're, we've pointed out, though, what we're supposed to do, but from the outside looking in, I mean, you know, there's a lot of things that, that are on the ballot this year for highway stuff, and if it's not there, and then, so are we, are we gonna get shortchanged on this deal?
I, I'm sure-
I'm just saying, do we have anything in writing, though, for that? That's my problem, because it is the state we're missing, or not missing, but they, they committed in writing to, to fund, to do the project right on your match.
Yeah.
Uh, from a financial standpoint, R-DOT, COVID has not had a negative impact on sales tax collections statewide. This whole state is experiencing what grievance is.
Right.
Uh, does that continue? I don't know.
Right.
Uh, but there, there have not been significant budget cuts to R-DOT. Uh, sales tax collections, which are tied to, uh, I see there's a, on the ballot, measure three, one?
One.
Um, but this project, we, we've been given assurance, is not contingent on issue one passing this.
Right. I get that, sorry, I get that from Ms. Tudor, who's the director, and also from our newest state commissioner, who lives over in Lobaque, spoke with him just less than two weeks ago, and said, irrelevant from the past, obviously, they need that to pass, and we need that to pass, and I think we're looking to turn around.
I still wanna get shortchanged, is what I'm trying to say, you know, get money, because I don't have money to get redirected and hurt, I mean, it's a touch of a button, so.
This particular commissioner, and I can't, Mr. Givens, Keith, I believe, is that correct? Over in Lobaque, the newest commissioner, said this is, they all get to pick projects, and I may be speaking a little out of turn here, but he, this is his project, and he's on the top of his list, and he said, I promise you, there will be no it's hands or buts whether that issue one passed.
I just wanted to make sure we got that kind of clarified, so, because all the stuff is going on.
Sure.
Back to what Tim was saying, I want to be clear, we, the council's part of the construction approval process, and at the end, there will be a vote of the council to approve the destruction documents. I don't think that's correct.
I don't, they, they never said there's a vote, they just said that, that here's what I was told early on, and this was before Ms. Tudor came on, and it was Mr. Bennett at the helm at the time, by him, and anybody who was under him, it would be that there would be these public meetings for council and any, like, for any, any grants or something like that, and that people, and as he said, that, that was mentioned too, that if we can do the things you're asking for, we will or shall, I guess, but, you know, if you're asking it to go five miles out, out of the way, to go around the farm or something, highway department's not gonna, they're not gonna put their money.
But ultimately, if we don't want the dog leg that's in there where they, they just say, well, that's just hope you're getting what you get.
I, I, this, this is my first traffic relief project to build, so I can't answer that, absolutely.
I think that-
But they have exactly-
We gotta understand, the highway department's gonna be the highway department, and they're gonna build the highway, and they'll, they'll listen to input, but at the end of the day, they're gonna do what they do.
And I think-
And I'm not saying that to be negative.
No, and I think the route, as, as you established there, no one hasn't any, as far as I know, we, we went through a lot of meetings ourselves and with the public on the route itself, and that's not a question whatsoever, and the connection on Main Street, which was a desire of Dr. Burgess, and something we should be doing, or will be doing, on, out of our pocket, but we, you know, that's not part of this project.
But I don't think the highway department's gonna know in the way to build something that's gonna be affected.
Absolutely.
They're not gonna put their money-
Well, for, for instance, when I approached them originally with this, five years ago, six years, whatever it was, it was a two, I went up there, went on the two-lane highway to help, and they, they immediately said, we probably wouldn't be involved with that, we wouldn't probably assist with that, because you don't wanna build a two-lane highway, and then five years from now, know that you needed it for them. So, you're, you're right, they're gonna have their prerequisites and what they-
One of, another way to look at it is that, if you want the project to go, you need R-DOT's money. You need their money more than they need your money. Uh, and so by you being willing to put the five million on the table, that puts it in a priority level that they're willing to, to proceed with, because you've, you've brought true, you've delivered on your person. Uh, it's easier for them to deliver on thirty million or twenty-five than it is really for you to deliver on five.
We moved up in the rankings quite a bit from-
Well, I think it's, I think it'd be at a good price, I think, for it. My, my concern was just making sure that, that, you know, because all is going on, that was all, you know, just-
Well, it certainly could be delayed, I expect, I already know that's-
They might have been yesterday on a project, and I think, so I mean, the highway department is still operating, uh, and wholly there considering-
Oh, yes. I'm not worried about even, well, Lance is worried about it, I'm just worried about us spending a bunch of taxpayers' dollars and then about leaving traffic. How do you, well-
Well, our, our, our position on this is, you know, it's twofold, relief traffic is as much as possible, and second, the safety issue, and I don't know which one sold the best, was the best seller, if you will.
Well, the traffic, the traffic relief is gonna be the best seller, I feel people are expecting it. We all send this traffic every day.
Yeah.
It could be twenty-five minutes, get from ten to miles, it's about four hundred yards.
Well, and I, it, they won't build it if it doesn't, I agree with that.
Keep in mind, keep in mind that the money can't be spent for anything but this project.
Right.
So, in the event something changes of any significance, the, the financing team, particularly Ryan Bowman and the front room, if it's not consistent with what the voters approved, that money's gonna have to be repaid to, to bond holders, uh, and the tax is gonna have to stop.
So, the, the idea that a road go next to the Masonic Lodge, if that is, would this be permissible to build with this one?
No, that, that is not part of the project, that's on us. The, the, that is on the map, that particular road is on the map of what we get, R-DOT is supplied, because they know that's connected, I mean, we, we couldn't just go build our city street and connect it to a state highway anyway without their blessing in there, so it's on the project, it's on the project map, but it's not part of this, of this funding. Now, that'll be us building a four-mile road.
They had to know there was an access that was required there, and they're responsible for helping build the, the, um, access point for us to connect to, so, but we're not building a four-lane access point, we're building a two-lane.
How does it don't get lost in the translation of bypass versus truck route? That road, that were, that were around at some point during the last three years of all, like, back and forth thinking that this is, in their eyes, a truck route, which we are having a truck route.
We believe that, well, the truck route, the truck will be restricted to that road, but it's not just for them, it, it is certainly traffic, but-
Well, and even something a truck route versus even a bypass has two different definitions in the eyes of the state, I would assume.
Um, not really. They view, they view it as it's a safety issue, and the traffic relief is random. They don't use, I don't think they can really use the term bypass route anymore.
Like around Bologna, you'd call that a truck route?
Coming, coming in from out of town, I would call it a bypass.
Yeah, right.
There'll be a common person who's gonna view it as a bypass, but it's, in their eyes, they don't call it bypass, it's, it's to, it's for a public safety, uh, to, to reduce the traffic.
We, we latched on to traffic relief one, because that's the biggest problem we had, we believe, we know about living here, bypass tends to, seems to send a message of, we don't want you coming to council, we want, but that's not the, you know, and we, and we dealt with that, Terry, before the election, so, I think people, well, eight percent, I think, whatever it was, decided that was the right thing, so.
At the end of the day, it's a reroute of I-10.
Yeah.
That's what it is, and, you know.
Yeah, because this will no longer be, as we all know-
This will not be ten anymore, or, or it's a reroute of P-N, you know? We have to pick the ordinance up early.
But they're gonna deliver to you in good condition?
Just once.
I think they will deliver to you in good condition, and how it is maintained is up to you.
It's up to us, yeah.
Well, just once.
Just once.
Upon receipt, of that, like you get a new car, it's new, day one.
As is, you know, that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you don't get a warranty with that. Uh, so the last thing I'll say is that-
We're doing Tassan Avenue, the exact same, we did great with Tassan, unfortunately.
That the passage of this bond ordinance is just the second, is the final step to what you took to the voters, and the voters have approved for this project. So this is, this is not a new approvals, it's really just the final step in formal finishing off of, of the voters, which you took to the voters.
I think we could have a good deal of process, I have no question, I'm just, logistics-wise, I haven't ever seen anything satisfy me at all on how the route, or all that, that's not, ain't by your fault.
Yeah, they're just not to it.
Any nice, have the big flyovers and all that junk that make it be nice and flowing.
I think your five million would be up fifty million.
Right, exactly, which leads me back to much stuff like that, is where we are at.
Mr. Terry is not, Councilman Terry is not a fan of stoplights, I don't know.
If they work great, I'd love to-
Either way, they're-
If they're synchronized, you have the big ground bell.
I don't even mind if it's synchronized, but, but, no little flashing arrows, just a green, red, yellow, that's, that's, whatever, why you wouldn't have work.
I personally, I love the city, I don't, I just saw the cops on color blind.
I always just, I stopped at the red, like the law says, but then I proceeded.
The town's never like that.
Didn't say stay, but it's a stop.
He's well documented on it.
Well documented, I'm gonna use the traffic statement.
That's true.
Um, I'm afraid of lack of obedience to speed laws.
It's a suggestion.
Right.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm making motion that we put this ordinance 2016 on its first reading, title on one.
Second.
Motion to the second, first reading, title on one.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Ralph, Ms. Baker?
Yes.
AC Brown?
Yes.
AC Yanis? And ordinance authorizing issuance of sales and use tax, refunding and improvement bonds for the purpose of financing and refinancing all our portion of the cost of capital improvements, pledging a quarter percent, quarter percent sales and use tax to pay principal owe and interest on bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declare an emergency.
I think I will, I will.
Yes.
I will.
I'm on your-
Now, when I look here, on the, uh, this, well, I think we say deleted stuff, you know, was, was that's the thing, too.
Yeah.
Where the, where the blink lines were, okay.
It does have an editing feature on the burn.
You have an ordinance, too.
Yeah, that, that just shows the ordinance from when it went out in the agenda packet, and then the final ordinance, and the final ordinance has the numbers in it after the bond sale that, uh, Mr. Allen described happening as well.
They have to go back in and put numbers in.
Yeah.
Make my choice to spin the rules away from second, third reading.
Second.
And motion second to spin the rules away from second and third reading.
Do that, they didn't include by title on one?
Please.
By title on one.
Second.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
AC Brown?
Yes.
AC Yanis?
Charlotte, will you read that, how long?
Oh, you need me to read it again?
Please.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Or I can.
No, I can. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales and use tax, refunding and improvement bonds for the purpose of financing and refinancing all our portion of the cost of capital improvements, pledging a quarter cent, quarter percent sales and use tax to pay principal owe and interest on bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, declaring an emergency.
Make motion we adopt ordinance twenty-one six.
And motion second to adopt.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Ms. McRae?
Yes.
AC Brown?
Yes.
Yanis?
Motion to enact emergency clause.
Okay. And motion second to enact emergency clause.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Ms. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
AC Brown?
Yes.
AC Yanis?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you very much on this issue, and I think you just made history.
I appreciate it.
One way or the other.
Appreciate a, a full, a full bill for this.
Sir?
I said, I appreciate having a full-
Absolutely, as I mentioned earlier, I appreciate everybody being here for this and have a full, full form, absolutely, and all the time out of your, your day. So, we have one more, uh, item on the agenda, it's number two, city attorney.
Y'all opinion of adding our little computer back, huh?
No, I don't think so. I, I did not add it, I'm assuming you did.
Do you go, do you go get a copy?
Yes.
I have.
I assume that's what, unless there's a new one.
I just got the one that, that moved.
We'll be picking on that one. We discussed this a big time ago.
Sign of the letter got us a little trouble, they, uh, so later, somebody told me that you're armed, he said.
Well, it's not overbought, oh, yeah.
Our municipal letters, and municipal leaders, they contacted, they had filed response to there, and, uh, I don't know, I believe that it's, I mean, so we've also, I think, we just missed other quickly, but fortunately, it cost three thousand dollars, and this for this to be just yet.
We charged him all our legal fees for this vote?
Sir?
People, we charged him back for our legal fees for this vote.
That's how we low his property and took off three thousand.
Yeah, we may, we may have to raise the cost of the vote. Actually, we have not, this is not one of those that we've mowed ourselves, Eddie, he has actually complied after, after much arguing and suing, and then, so I don't know, that's just.
Last thing on this, isn't it?
No. We got a, I got a response today, did you get that from?
Yeah, I, I'll be, I'll be.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that what you wanted?
No, I, I thought I might be, but I was, I was told about the top of my head, it was all.
Okay. I didn't get it, so you already said what you needed to say?
I already said what I need to say.
Okay.
If there's any questions, ask now.
So, the municipal league response is, is, or their?
Their attorneys brought response, um, Jared Cox is the judge, and so they're trying to get a quick hearing before he goes out of office on their request to dismiss, so, I think that's what's going to happen.
Seriously, though, you think we can recover our expense?
I think you can, I, recovering your attorney's fees are very limited in certain actions, and, uh, sometimes the judge has wide discretion in doing that, but there has to be a specific statute that says you can recover attorney's fees such as contract actions, and you can recover divorce actions, such, petrified discretion to do that, but if you're in a car accident, you don't recover attorney's fees, there has to be a specific statute that is out there, and, uh, I'm not real sure the angle with their type to defend this, I, I just know that we, we didn't do it by telephone, uh, we could go, uh, that they indicated, uh, that thing that I thought that this is just frivolous, and, uh, if the judge finds this a frivolous action, he can, he can.
He never said, though, what he wanted in this lawsuit?
Yeah.
I was.
Basically, I, I, I understood it as to, and I agree with Mr. Andy, you didn't really say, other than that we, the city, uh, asked the same thing of other residents that we have, that we asked of him or demanded of him, which is what's, we immediately, an attorney from usually requested for us to have proof of that, and I think we can't have thirty or forty, I don't have any letters. These are the letters that Mr. Bell sends out daily, weekly.
And then he mentioned the water, he said the city over.
Yeah, he, he, and he claimed that the water directly, or a piece of property directly across the highway, which, the road, which, I think we talked about this a little bit before, is either Ruthie McConnell's property or a little patch of woods, and then, I can't remember the next gentleman that owns that house, but the little patch of woods would have been a road coming, an access road coming out of the Oak subdivision, that's what that was. We don't know it, I don't, I'm not sure, in fact, if you look it up on Google or the county, no one owns it, but it was designated as a road at one time for that subdivision, but that's got to be the place, and it's woods, it's, it's not, it's not a yard, it's, um, not taken care of, it's just a little, probably a forty-foot wide patch of woods.
Well, I think that is a point, it's, we'd like to have a way of burning people who are just suing the city randomly all the time with cards less than three grand every month, or have these guys come tell us a frivolous lawsuit, I mean.
I mean, can't you just say, I sued, you gotta say I'm suing you for something, right?
I don't think, but I, I have a, I have a lawyer, a gentleman that has, uh, sued my client, I think seventeen times over the past three months in LA, Dallas, here, Russell Bill, uh, Van Guren, Portsmouth, and then he even got, went some far, he sued me several very times, and it's all over Hex, but my client supposedly put on a beer, you know, back in two thousand and three, and, uh, he hired attorneys, I can't believe they're representing him, Phil Billy, and, and he said, Phil Billy, and he went and talked to an attorney, Josh Fuge, and Josh called me up two days ago, and, uh, said, he sued, just sued him, and he just had office conflict, but then he wouldn't know what was going on, so, yeah, if you sue anybody, they'd be tied for any reason, and if you're nuts, they can't, they really don't do anything about it, I got, I got a ton of fees that he's supposed to pay me, but the man tells me there's a SSI check that I can never recover, but if I don't respond to his lawsuits, then the judge can enter an order giving my alert to ask me for it, he came into my office one day and said that Phil Volta dropped by a billion dollars, and he was about to pick it up, but don't believe what he's talking, he's real nice.
I'm, I'm looking, and I, I don't see it for some reason, uh, the email, I was going to read you the email that I got from the attorney, actually from her legal.
Paralegal.
Paralegal today, do you have it?
I have it in the hall.
It kind of gave, it was kind of an update for me and Sunny and the city to know what her next steps were, and for the life of me, I can't, I don't see it on my phone here, uh, but it wasn't, it wasn't anything earth-shattering, but my answer, question of what are we going to, what are they going to do about it, did you notice anything, do you remember?
Look, here, I have it in the hall, so, I, I'm not, I'm not, ma'am, but when we were at the meeting, uh, you and Sunny and I
Yeah.
and spoken to, uh, for about thirty, forty-five minutes.
I don't know why I'm saying.
They indicated that there was a potential violent answer, and they were immediately going to ask for a judgment on the pleadings, they, he didn't state a legal cause of action, and asked if he did submit it.
Oh, if I find it, I'll send it to you, for sure, and maybe, I don't know why it's not here, but, uh, it, it didn't say, it didn't jump out to me, and I'm not an audiographer, but it didn't jump out to me that we're going to sue, but to get, back to get our fees back, and just.
Well, you just say, that's a leading email.
I am not saying anything else, I promise you, but now, let me rephrase, I can delete emails accidentally very easily, and a lot of other, I don't intend to, but I just don't see it, I usually hand it to Danielle, and she finds it within five seconds.
So, I was saying, we just, we get very.
Remind us, though, of, on the municipal league defense or remor- grant, how's that work? I mean, I thought we paid a annual.
Pay annual fee, but there's a three thousand dollar non-recoverable, we can't afford the lawsuit, and they re-accept, and your policy that you have with them, uh, not like the policy that covers everything.
We don't really get anything for our fee.
Yeah, we, you know, police officer, they keep somebody in recessive force, and, uh, yeah, then they cover you, and they also will pay a portion of the damages for this, in this case, they pay for defense, uh, for three thousand dollars, that's all it costs you, and I'm telling you, if you were not hired by our attorney to do it, it would cost you at least another war, so, that's my unreasonable price. Uh, but they're not covering, you know, for some reason, two wins, they don't cover any damages with this action. And at one time, we had a former mayor through the city, who had, uh, various lawsuits where it was not covered under the municipal league defense policy, and we had to go out and hire a private counsel to do that. And I've been in some of these, these priorities, I think, over the years.
I'm always, basically, I always just have to have a ceiling, I want to sell, you know.
Well, I think this will be, I think this will be this very thorough, especially because of Jeff Cox here, that he's a former city attorney for many years.
I guess they don't get dismissed, they will worry about it.
I said, if you don't get dismissed, they will worry about it, I mean, what are you, what are you going to do?
Park, we just park them on.
I'm just telling, bring y'all up there, this is out there.
You just say it until we find out, I believe what they're going to do.
Fire truck out there.
Make a motion, good yard.
Second.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rick Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mayor, no, you say something else?
I had a big speech.
I did.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
I know, I know, you saw it, you saw it coming, didn't you?
Yeah.
Or something like that.
Brian?
Brian?
I'm sure that everyone is.
Yeah, we'll take care of all of them. We'll call neighbor.